Welcome to the Tuesday. Excuse me, Jen. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Sarah?
Morris. Weir?
Yes.
Smack?
Here.
Clements?
Here.
Dewater?
Here.
Thank you. Number four is approval of the August 5th, 2025 agenda. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five is public comment. You have three minutes to come up to the podium if you have anything that you'd like to share with council or myself.
My name is Bruce Givens, live on Eldine Court. And myself and the following residents on Eldine are not happy with the way the construction turned out with the intersection of our street, Eldine and Lafayette. It doesn't allow cars to pass each other at the intersection. And so I took pictures and I wouldn't have got too, stayed upset, but everybody on my street says the same thing. It's narrower than it was. We never had a problem for 40 years and now it does. In the second phase, when they completed that, if you look down here, both streets are constructed the same as ours. Each street on the, each side of the church, one of them is Minor and what's the other?
Saunders.
Saunders. They each have the curb on the outside of the existing roadway, so it's much wider. And even the way the road contours out to Lafayette is, is much wider than ours. And I guess I got the signatures, a lot of people on the street, some aren't home or whatever, but they want something, they want to know, they want a written explanation, whoever drew up the blueprints, why? What was the reason? Why ours is narrower than these other streets that are constructed the same? And we couldn't get an explanation from, it wasn't, the blueprints were correct. I mean, they went by the blueprints, but I wondered whoever drew the blueprints, why? They did it. And we didn't get an explanation yet. We want something done about it. We want it wider. So you can look at the pictures and look at them.
Well, I've, I've been out there, as you well know, and looked at it. I thought maybe you were gonna have pictures of two cars conflicted or...
No, no. Well, until this is, until the last layer is on there, you know, you're going, you can't really go up on this cement. But yeah, everybody I talked to said, there is no way. And especially trucks with the mirrors and these guys, everybody's got a pickup and the mirrors stick out that far.
Even taking into account that you're gonna gain this apron on each side?
Why isn't the blacktop met? Why did they narrow the road? Why wouldn't you make it? Okay, pass that around. Why are, why is this, this existing roadway, Minor and Saunders, you said, the cement is to the outside? There's no reason why they couldn't have left it sane in ours. It's not. I mean, that's real simple. And then there's roads when you walk or ride a bike like I do, their roads are like a dirt road, pretty much, or sand or whatever. They're four feet wider than the existing. It doesn't, there's no rhyme or reason. It just, we want an explanation to people on the street. Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yep.
And this is our copy, Bruce, that you say we could keep? Okay.
Sure.
We'll keep it here.
We'll place it on file. Yep.
Okay. Any, anyone else like to address the council tonight? Okay. Moving on, item six is Isaiah Corbin with InterCog. He's here to discuss the city's LMI set aside program that we're in the process of, low to moderate income. Do you wanted to step up to the podium? And we were kind of talking about possibly with nuisance abatements for the low to moderate income.
Sure. So like Deanne said, I'm with InterCog, Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, which is just a local planning agency for state and county government. And one of the things that we do a lot is housing and housing rehab. And so Deanne and I have been having a couple of conversations over the phone and through email. And for any time you start doing TIF, as part of that TIF, you have what's called LMI set aside. So LMI stands for Low to Moderate Income Individuals or Families. And so basically that's everything 80% below area median income. So the state makes you, when you start doing these tip programs, set aside a certain portion of those funds to go to LMI housing. Because typically when you do TIF, it goes to, you know, market rate housing. And so as I understand, the city has $46,471 available. And then come June of next year, they'll have an additional $69,706. So a total of $116,175. So according to Iowa code, section 40320, or 40322, you can do various things with these funds. And there's a lot of flexibility and it's pretty wide open. And if you look, they, you know, they allow you to sell lots, they allow you to do construction. And the other thing that they kind of leave open is to do grants, credits, or direct assistance for LMI families. And so usually this is the route that a lot of communities take when they're figuring out how to spend their LMI set aside is they'll do grants. And it can look a lot of different ways in a lot of different communities. And it just kind of depends on how you want to go about doing that. So at InterCog, over the past several years, we've done a lot of these LMI set aside plans just to put kind of boundaries on how you approach it. Because obviously, you know, there's a lot of leeway and you get a lot of latitude with the state. And so these plans, what they do is just kind of give you an idea of kind of what guidelines you should follow for everyone that qualifies, their eligibility of kind of how you want to spend the funds. And then a process for going about and spending those funds. And so that's really kind of what we do is we help put together that plan. Usually it involves a small group and we kind of, what I do is help facilitate that conversation. And like I said, if you look at the code, it's pretty, it's pretty broad in what you can do. And so we've done rehab programs where the city goes and has the homeowner find several contractors and they're responsible for finding the contractors, then the city helps them with specific rehab projects. Other communities have also done a form of down payment assistance for their mortgage. So like a first time home buyer, if they were low income and they were getting their first mortgage, they've done that. I know obviously there's, there's been some issues with trees. And so some other cities have also taken their funds and, and set it aside for like emergency scenarios where cities can apply directly to the city and, you know, take care of whether it's a tree or something emergent. Your AC goes out, you need to be a little quicker. And it just kind of depends on how the community decides to spend those funds and what process they choose to go forward in those, in those guidelines. And that's what InterCog does is, is help facilitate that. Alongside that, we typically do income eligibility. So if you want our housing planner Cindy, she'll work with those applicants to prove that they're below 80% area median income as well. And so that's what we can do. That's what we have done. Some cities just kind of go about it in kind of a Wild, Wild West nature where they just kind of spend the funds and if they can spend them, they can spend them. And that's great. But you know, the plan is kind of nice because you, from a city's perspective, you don't get into a situation where you, you know, maybe could favor some person over another. You know, you, you have a set guideline to follow and so you kind of stay out of some of those issues with the plan. And that's, that's really what the value of the plan is. And I think the last thing that I would say is, you know, I think using this as a way to work with code enforcement is also another great opportunity. Because obviously, you know, I think when most people look at code enforcement, they kind of see it as the heavy hand of like you just, you know, trying to get us to do this and this and this. And obviously it's not always easy to, to make these repairs as a homeowner, especially if you're low income. So you can use it as a way to work with your code enforcement to help address the, the code while also helping the homeowner. So I think there's a lot of different, unique ways which you can kind of set up your program and go about it. And it just kind of depends on how creative you want to get with that. So that's my spiel on LMI set aside plans. Are there any questions, comments?
So to me, each particular grant would be fairly low, right? I mean, for the allocation we have.
Yeah. And really that kind of, you know, that's, that's where the plan and you can kind of work through it. So you know, you could set a guideline of, you know, up to 5,000. You could do it up to 40,000. I mean, you'd kind of have to figure out where you want to set those, those numbers. And you know, I've seen plans do 5,000, I've seen do 10. I've seen cities that have just kind of struggled to spend the funds and just want to spend them like this. And so they do 15 just to get the money out the door. So.
Yeah, and our total, once the set aside is completely received, will be 114,000. So it's gonna be 69,000 by the end of June of next year.
Yep.
We're kind of wait, holding off, but we see a need, we see a need in our city for
Yeah.
more like some code enforcement things, according to the storms last week, some trees around the area. So.
So is this what number seven's all about too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Scott.
I have a question. You listed AC as an emergency. AC is not required by the code.
Sure. I mean, again, you can kind of have that argument. I would make the argument that in this day and age, when your heat gets up to 100 degrees and your, I've been in a house that doesn't have AC for a week. You know, there's, could be health reasons, whether it's asthma. Obviously, it's not required by building code per se. But I still think, I think if you talk to a reasonable person, they'd probably make the argument that it's valuable enough to make the home suitable for public health reasons. This would be my argument. Again, that's up to the committee to decide. I don't make those decisions. But that would be my argument if I were gonna lay out the other side.
Code or no code, we do an awful lot of them.
Yeah.
Because it is a necessity and a lot of people have respiratory issues. So all of the rehab programs do air conditioning.
Yeah.
Any other questions, council?
Great.
Thank you, Isaiah.
Yeah, so just let me know the next steps. Obviously, if you want to move forward with the plan, I can help put together proposals to put in front of council. And happy to talk about it more as well. But just wanted to come kind of give you the general idea of kind of what we do. And if you're curious, the code again is 403.22. So you can kind of look through that language as well for yourself if you'd like and need something to fall asleep to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Isaiah. I appreciate it. That brings us into item seven, council to consider. We will go sidewalk, we're gonna be starting a sidewalk program. We have tree abatements, certain type of nuisances. And also we're going through our sun pump program. And there's been some residents that are illegally hooked to our wastewater system, sanitary sewer, and don't have the funds to tear up their basement, put a new sun pump in. And these are all things that our residents are experiencing, especially some of our lower income. Isaiah didn't mention tonight, but he also said, I mean, you could do your own plan and you could set it like it, you know, maybe 5,000, you know. And they, you know, we could have a process that would go through hardship and grievance.
Like a repairs program of some sort?
Yeah. Well, that would cover, you know, tree abatement, sidewalk. You know, we're gonna be probably this fall, starting the sidewalk program. We'll have more details to, to bring to you. And then again, with the sun pump, the illegal connection to the city sanitary.
Yeah, no, I think these items you have listed here as examples are excellent.
Yeah. Yes.
Because there's probably quite a backlog of some of this stuff in there.
There are.
Is there a backlog of people in non-compliance?
We have a couple.
Just in our, yeah, since we and Steve have been working on it, we just have a few. But that's the zone we're still currently working on. We just broke it up a little bit. It wasn't so over.
But I've had residents, when I tell them about having the problem, what they need to do, a lot of them are saying, well, we don't have the funds. We're in fixed income. And so I deal with this in the city of Raymond. Raymond's had LMI money for as long as I've been doing code enforcement. So everything we do in there is emergency based. Bruce, we've done AC that's medically, has to be, the doctor says they have to have it. We've done sewer disconnects and we've done just about everything. And they based it on a certain dollar amount. I think they started at eight with the 10. But they had a lot more funds available. I mean, we could do something in this city, even start at two or three. I mean, two or $3,000 is gonna be a good amount of money to fix like a drain that's hooked up wrong. Maybe get a sub pump in, maybe take down a, not a very large tree, but it'll definitely help with some of the tree problems. It's definitely gonna help with sidewalks in the future.
Yeah.
And then we have code enforcement issues where, you know, I go out and I look at something and siding needs to be painted or they got a hole in their house or something and the funds ain't available. So these programs, like you said, repair program. We can help citizens with repairs that they can't afford. We need some kind of, we need some kind of funding available for the lower moderate income people. If we're gonna go out and continue to do code enforcement, I can do code enforcement and then we put people in a bad place. So if we have some kind of funds to offer them to help, you know, get them out of that bad place, that'd be good. Waterloo, I know with Waterloo did their sun pump program. It's been a few years. They have money set aside, I think it was 2,000 if I remember correctly. Yeah, they got a grant, special grant for $2,000 a home.
And that covered most of it probably.
Yeah.
No, I think it's excellent, really. Because I've been in a lot of small communities that had no assistance and it shows. Homeowners just keep falling behind. It's unfortunate.
That's what's gonna happen. I mean, they don't repair it. I mean, we gotta take it to court. And then the city can go in there, repair it, and then we gotta turn around and put it on their taxes. Well, they can't afford the taxes. The next thing you know, we're hurting their house. So I just feel like, I think the mayor agrees too and the council agreed too. We need to, if we can offer some kind of help, I feel it'd be a good thing if we could do it.
Well, I, you know, I can talk to Isaiah about maybe putting a smaller, not so significant program together. Like it's, it's just maybe a help program. It's, you know, just to get some of these things addressed that are. And another thing too, it's hazardous to the public. So some of these issues are hazardous to the public, sidewalks, trees, you know, some of this stuff is. So those are things to take in consideration.
Curbs?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, I'll put some more stuff in front of you guys probably at the next meeting.
Good.
If that's okay with you. Item seven is council to approve abatement of dead tree at 805 Home Acres Avenue. You guys have seen pictures in your packet. Steve has been working with this homeowner for quite some time. We found out after we received a complaint. So it says in our code that we have to bring it to council first. And then the process is we send out a letter, a certified letter, and they have 14 days to rectify the condition. So. Here it is. Yeah.
Well, I think we need to at least start the process.
Right.
Yeah, I am the homeowner that's being affected by that tree.
Yes.
I have quite a big debris.
You would have to come up to the podium too.
I live at 825 Home Acres and there's a large, very large tree in my backyard and right next to my shed. That tree's been dead for many, many years. Prior to this, when branches fell, the neighbor came over, took care of it and stuff. Now she will not. We had kind of getting into it because I had to call the police on her at one point. But now my insurance company took my shed off of my insurance policy because of that tree. And these limbs that came down are like trees on their own. You cannot budge them, you cannot move them. There's nothing I can do. Right now I'm fighting cancer. I'm on oxygen. I shouldn't even be here. But I need to get help with that, definitely. The person, Harvey, I don't know if you know him, he mows my lawn because I'm not capable of doing that. I've been a widow for a little while now. He has to go around it and it's, it's just not a good thing, you know? And I need definitely help with that because I cannot take care of it. I, I'm on very small social security. I live on a thousand dollars a month. It's, it's impossible, you know? I get done paying my mortgage, my bills and everything, there's nothing left. I mean, absolutely nothing, you know? So it's, and I, I do need help with that. And I cannot talk to my neighbor about it. There's no communication, no nothing. I've tried every way possible. It's just not happening. So I need y'all's help to get that tree removed before it takes my shed out completely, you know? And like I says, I cannot remove it. It's not possible.
And the, the tree is not on your property, correct? So okay, I just wore the plot line is?
No. I took some pictures of it, of the limbs that came down and quite large, like just that they're, they're like trees on their own.
Yep.
You know, and they're on my, on my shed and right next to my shed. It's, it's just horrendous, you know? This neighbor of mine had the chance to remove that tree at one point. Her, her mother got a piece of equipment over there to take that tree down and she refused to do it. So I don't know what to do about that. I don't, I don't know where to go with it. But it needs to be taken care of, definitely, you know, so.
That's us one here.
Yeah, Big Dead one crossed with the shed.
Yeah. Yeah. I posted it online. I said, you know, could get some help? Somebody come over and cut this thing up and, you know, something, something. It's, but the only people that volunteered, they live in California and Alaska. You know what I mean? So it's like, okay then. So I'm, I'm asking you if I help in this matter.
Thank you, Mrs. Butterfield.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
I'm sorry, just Steve. Any open dialogue or communication from you to the homeowner?
Oh, yeah.
Or the property owner?
They can't afford it.
Is that, okay. I was gonna say, is that where we're at then?
They can't afford to get the tree down.
Okay.
You can come up to the podium.
And I've, I've worked with them a little bit, trying to, I've dealt with this tree for about a year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
And dealing with them, they were doing the best they could. They were taking down whatever they could at the time, what they had. So every time I did come by, they would have some work done. So I continued to work with them. This last storm, I mean, we've had so much.
This happened before the storm. Yeah, actually the last storm, absolutely nothing came off the tree. The tree stood 100% solid.
This is her time to talk now?
Um, and I have no idea if that tree is mine or not. We have no idea where the lines are. So, and I have chosen to take care of the tree for everybody in the neighborhood because I'm the only one that's not elderly and I just felt like it was my responsibility. So I've cleaned up all the yards. And it's, no, I have cleaned yours, Connie. I absolutely have, until you.
Mrs. Butterfield.
Police about my kids playing volleyball. And I actually was over with a handsaw, cutting hers up as well to take care of it this time. But I, I just can't logically do that when the woman hates me and is gonna call the police about my kids playing volleyball. I'm just not gonna do it. It's not entirely a money issue. There's animals that live in that tree. There's all kinds of woodpeckers. The tree is, yes, dead, but it is an ecosystem that affects all of the other trees and plants and animals in the neighborhood. So I think it has value. There's nothing back there except for empty yards. There's no danger to anyone. The shed that has branches on it is not used. It is completely falling apart. Not that that's my business or I have a right to say anything about it because it's hers. And I will, would have taken care of the tree, which is, it didn't damage anything. But yeah, I think we have to start with figuring out whose tree it is. Because it's not necessarily mine. It's on the line of three different properties. So. I don't know how that works with code or...
I remember when I looked it up, and all I do is I go off of Beacon. And it gives us a general idea of where stuff is. So at that time, a few years ago, when we first talked about it, we looked at Beacon and we just pretty much said it's hers.
Okay. Well, I know that the neighbor that is behind had said that, because he's lived there 60 years. And he said that it was a shared thing when they, previously, that him and the previous owners had taken shared responsibility. I don't know, like, if you go by the fences and stuff, it looks to me like it's probably not mine, but I don't know. Because.
I looked at maps, like, and it is on the side.
Do you have your property, our tree's out in the yard?
We're not gonna have this tonight at this meeting. Thank you, Venus. I'll take in a motion to move forward with the tree, certified letter to abate the tree.
I'll make that motion. Second.
And just one other more point, just in the bigger picture, as we're looking at this. Obviously, this moves the process and I do agree, something has to be done with the tree. We are looking at assistance programs and things that aren't in place yet. But this process does put a 14 day timestamp of abatement.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any legal room in there to work with the city or if we're working out problems? If that is, whoever owns the tree, if that is what they feel they need to do? Are we locked into 14 days and they need to take care of it or we do? Or how does that work in with the, the programs that we don't have yet set up?
Well, that would be a decision for council.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on the table to send out the letter. If you would like a different consideration?
So currently with the letter that goes out, the way things are wrote, 14 days, all or nothing? Correct? It's, it's either taken care of or we take care of it.
There's been times that Steve has worked with them too. I mean, if there's a resolution in the future?
If they were, once we determine 100% who owns the tree, if that person determines that I gotta, I'm on, like I've had people come back and say, I've got this estimate from this tree company. They're 30 days out. I can't get anybody here for 30 days. We've extended it due to that circumstance. I can't control if council wants to extend something longer to try and get a program together. But all I can go by is what we have.
Okay.
So we have 14 days and, you know, we'll work pretty hard to determine whose tree it is. And the responsible party will have 14 days to get rid of that tree, get somebody hired with a signed contract if it needs to be extended. But we don't just extend it to extend it.
And just for clarification, the city does not get involved in determining whose tree it is?
No. Well, we just look at.
That, that's a surveying situation, which is another very large expense.
I go by Beacon. And so whatever I see on Beacon, that's what I go by.
Nice to come. Nice to come.
What would a tree like that cost to get down, do you think?
About five thousand dollars.
How much?
About five thousand.
I don't know, we'd have to get estimates, but I've seen some trees go down between two.
Do you, you could stand up to the podium?
Just have a question, if you can't, I'm the mom.
Okay.
Didn't get any equipment that was refused, but my only question is, if you can't determine whose tree it is, how can you determine that Venus needs to take it down? And if, if Connie does know where those markers are, if she doesn't want to discuss it with us, if she could maybe discuss it with the inspector.
Same here.
Okay, well, we've looked for them and we can.
Mrs. Butterfield, please don't respond.
That's what, you know, if you guys can work with her on showing us where those are. Nobody knows, for they are, they're in the ground.
And I think the, the point that Steve was making and all we could go off of, you know, without employing a full-time survey crew, is what the county provides us for the plots and what we can see on a map. From there, if it's something disputed to say that, nope, this is not mine, it would be on the property owner to then prove that, is where we're at with it.
Okay.
So it's, and it's not trying to pick on one over the other, it's just the information that we've got.
And Venus and I aren't there. You know, we've done the cleaning up, she's done all that. And we've all worked together until just recently. And then I think that's what the issue is, but.
And again, I don't, at least I can speak for myself, I, I do believe, I will speak for the rest of the council, we're certainly not looking to make a hardship on anybody. Clearly, the item that we just discussed before this is to provide assistance for these types of things.
And that's it because.
That was no coincidence for tonight's discussion.
No way she can afford this.
Yep, yep, that was absolutely put there for a reason, so. But at the end of the day, if we're gonna hold everybody accountable.
Right.
We have to hold everybody accountable to the same, so.
Okay.
It is not just this, like Steve even just said at the beginning, we've got a few tonight.
And he's been awesome.
And, and we've got a bunch coming with the next weeks, and as much as we'd love to just, you know, wave a wand and be done next week. It's just gonna be a slow-go process.
Every, the whole, the whole neighborhood has worked together.
Sure.
Until just recently.
Sure.
So, um, yeah, we, Venus and I wanna keep doing that.
Sure.
But. That's, that was my question.
Yeah, no, you're all good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So if the question of who owns a tree, could we say the abatement letter will be pending verification? I take Steve's word for it though.
So what I'll do is I'll get a picture of the overview, and we can zoom in on it, and I'll send it to council. So when you look at it, to me looking at the picture, the trunk is on her property. There are branches that stretch over to the neighbor's property and the other adjacent neighbor's property. But I've always gone by the trunk. You can't go by branches. I'm sure we all know how insurance companies work. Mother nature, if something falls on your property from the neighbor's tree, it's still your responsibility. I always go by the trunk. And my best view is Beacon, we can zoom in pretty good on Beacon, you can see the lot lines where the, Beacon's usually pretty close. They might be off, you know, a foot something, but not that bad. So that's what I go by. That's the only tool I have. If, if a homeowner wants to dispute it, they're more than welcome to get a survey, have the survey complete, bring it into the city, and then we can go off that survey. But, I mean, this is what I'm going off of, this is what I do my job as I go off of. And I use it for everything. We're all, I think we're all, most people are familiar with Beacon, it's a pretty good tool. That's how I do it.
I think that's pretty accurate.
I use it for just about every, and I've used it in my thirty, as long as I've been doing construction, as long as it's been around, I've always used it.
That's why it's there, probably.
Yeah.
Call for the vote, you have a motion and second on the floor, may I?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number nine, counsel to approve abatement of dead tree at four fifty-four Grand Boulevard. As I stated earlier, sitting in front of you is a updated picture from this afternoon. And that is, again, probably similar situation, but it's a little bit more cut and dry. I'll take a motion to approve the abatement of dead tree at four fifty-four Grand Boulevard.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number ten is counsel to approve abatement of dead tree at two forty-three Weema Avenue. Very similar situation. We've, you know, it's been going on a long time. We need to start addressing it, especially with the storms from last week. I do encourage and I hope that we could get something together. I'll do my darndest to get something together for our next meeting, which is two weeks out. You know, even if we have a helps program, kind of emergency type funding for situations like this. So I'll take a motion to approve this abatement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eleven is approval of the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve is approval of the resolution calendar. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Weir?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
Number thirteen, we have two separate appointments tonight to fill vacancies. The first one is hardship and grievance board, and that is Betty Rowe, and this is a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. Take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B is planning and zoning to fill vacancy, Adam Shepherd, with term ending twelve thirty-one of twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number fourteen is a public hearing on a budget amendment. We'll consider the public hearing open. Proof of publication on file, and nothing was heard from the public at this point. But public could definitely get up and talk at the podium if they'd like to. Just a long story short of this budget amendment, we're just basically moving funds from last year for the construction projects into this year because they were not spent. Anything from the public? Okay. I will close the public hearing and consider number item fifteen, resolution sixty-nine eighty-six, approving the FY twenty-six budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Weir?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
Sixteen, on our agenda tonight is a railroad proclamation. I'll be reading the proclamation. This is National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the United States from September fifteenth through the twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. Whereas two thousand two hundred and fifty-two rail grade crossing collisions result, resulted in seven hundred and forty-nine personal injuries and were responsible for two hundred and sixty-eight fatalities in the United States during twenty twenty-four. Whereas one thousand four hundred and sixty-five pedestrians trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in eight hundred and twenty-one pedestrians being killed and another six hundred and forty-four injured while trespassing on railroad property rights, oh, right of ways, sorry, during twenty twenty-four. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public the railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railway, railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. Whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver Incorporated, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad cooperations commit to partnering together in effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety, to enforce applicable laws in support of National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, I, Deanne Kabliska, mayor, do hereby attest by full support proclaiming September fifteenth through the twenty-first of twenty twenty-five National Sea Tracks Think Tracks Think Train Week. And I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of the rail safety education. And that was given in part by our local railroad. Number seventeen, request to approve the annual Evansdale Days firework donation in the amount of three thousand as budgeted, and to approve the display of fireworks at the Community Response Center on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighteen, request to purchase heat pump for the Community Response Center in the amount of six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars with air services as budgeted for FY twenty-six. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nineteen is request for mayor to enter into annual heating cooling maintenance agreement for both the Evansdale City Hall and Community Response Center in the amount of four thousand twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. We also did this last year, and it saves us every time that they come out to change filters or we're having an issue with the heating and cooling at the Community Response Center, saves us about forty dollars an hour.
Just out of curiosity, I see that there's a limit of fifty hours on this contract. Have we ever exceeded that fifty hours?
Yes.
And what rate are we charged after that fifty hours?
It's like, I, I think it's like eighty dollars an hour. And since we're talking about the Community Response Center, I have followed up with Mr. Brewer. He is the engineer that had approached us about, actually, we approached him to discuss the heating and cooling at the CRC. He's still working on that. He's actually doing a, we've sent him a lot of information on our expenses, what, you know, what we've paid for electricity, what we've paid for gas, et cetera. And he's putting an evaluation together. I hope that he can attend a council meeting hopefully within the next month.
Is this, is this an appropriate opportunity to say that apparently the work we did waterproofing that basement last year was a good move based on rainfall we've had?
Yes.
Sorry.
Down, it's been down.
Yeah.
There's been no water yet.
We actually had to call Iowa Wausau out.
Yep.
Because we were having some issues.
We had a sound pump issue.
Yes. On the whatever wall that is, I never know if it's west, east, north.
Yeah, it was the west wall.
Because, yeah. And we were having issues with that pump, it did lock up. So, and then there was a leak in one of the cylinders, right when you come down the steps. The PVC pipe, I should say. So, I mean, that's been a really good, that was really good on our part to move forward with that. We do need to have that cleaned, so I'd asked him to check into that because I think we approved having a ma, one, a maintenance on that system as well. But right now, we're gonna talk about item nineteen. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number twenty is request to approve engagement agreement with auditor Bergen KDV for the FY twenty-five audit in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
And just before you call for the vote.
Sure.
This is a direct conflict, is this is a specialty of my employer, so I have a direct financial conflict here, so I will not be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Justin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number twenty, request to approve engagement agreement, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on twenty-one. We had done this already, but we're doing it again because we had the wrong year of the vehicle. Twenty-one is request to set bid and bid date for twenty twenty-twelve Chevrolet Tahoe with low bid establishment. I did do a Kelly Blue Book on that vehicle. I, you can go out there and look at it after we're done. I, I totally believe it's in fair condition, showing some sign, sign of aging with some of the rust, but, you know, it was in service for thirteen years. Kelly Blue Book for a fair con, condition is anywhere from seven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars to ten thousand six eighty. Private party, it said nine thousand seventy-five. The last meeting when we were thinking it was the twenty thirteen, we start, we were considering the bid at seventy-five for starting bid.
I'm very skeptical, but.
No, it, it is, it's all up to you guys. I mean.
I'm with you, Dick, and the last couple went for more than I was expecting out of them. So, I mean, I'm, I'm okay going up a little bit, but I'm fine keeping it at seventy-five hundred too.
I was thinking of lowering it.
Really?
It's the pits.
I, I, I'm gonna say I was that side before, and others, as the council as a whole, we stayed higher than what I was thinking it was gonna get, and we got a dollar amount for them, so I was shocked.
You actually think it's worth more than that?
No.
No.
She, I would, I would lower the, lower the bid to five.
She's thinking like Irish was.
Looked at it, you know, I mean, like I said, it was in service for thirteen years.
And it's a patrol vehicle. Yeah, I mean, it's, they're, they rode hard, so.
We can always come down.
I'm fine making a motion for seventy-five hundred.
I'll second that.
Minimum bid.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Starts at seventy-five hundred, we'll be advertising it this week to take bids. Twenty-two, request to schedule special meeting on the nineteenth of August at four thirty. Our next meeting is the nineteenth of August. However, we will be starting the meeting at four thirty instead of six, just to discuss body cams. Take a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An hour and a half to discuss body cams?
There, there's three different companies, and they're each getting a half an hour. I, and just so you know, if, if any of you missed it in your email, I have sent over the three different proposals. And I've also asked Sergeant Newman to put together like pros and cons, maybe, of each company. So you guys will have that beforehand, hopefully. Twenty-three is request from Cedar Valley U Sports Association for funds in the amount of twenty-five hundred as budgeted for FY twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I did talk to Wanda today, and she thinks they're gonna use that, that funding to replace the lights that had rotted out. So that's, she will contact us and let us know what the board decided to utilize it for. Twenty-four is request to replace sprinkler heads with Blackhawk sprinkler in the amount of six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And this is at the Community Response Center. And I don't think we've had any kind of replacements in the last twenty years.
Not that I can directly attest to.
Yeah.
I think they say that they were installed in two thousand four.
Yeah. They were.
I mean, we've got good life out of them.
Yeah. And there's ninety-seven of them, so.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch.
I make, make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number twenty-five is request for. Number twenty-five is request to refuse all bids placed on the sixty-four by twenty-seven feet building located at nine fifty-two Gilroyville Road.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, ordinance seven oh nine, amending mayor compensation. Um, we have to do this before the election for whoever may be elected in that position. Um, and this is the first reading.
Move passage of ordinance seven oh nine in its first reading. Second.
Roll call, please. Sarah?
Weir?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Excellent, great meeting so far. Mayor and council reports, um, I just had a couple things, um, just to state to the general public is tree services need to be insured and they need to be permitted with the city. The permit is only five dollars, but why we do this is to make sure they're insured. So we're actually looking after our residents to make sure no willy-nilly company comes in and maybe does damage to something on your property. So just kinda heads up, ask if they have a permit, if they're coming to your house to remove trees. Um, I already did my update on the CRC, so I also want a special thank you, um, in a, in a very large applause uh, for the street department, for, uh, all that they did last week, for keeping us safe, um, for getting all the trees, for working buku-buku hours, coming in at all sorts of hours in the middle of the night. Um, and your whole team, Chris, we really appreciate you. Also, the police department and our first responders, um, who were actively out there letting us know what was going on. Just wanna thank all of you.
Awesome.
Counsel?
Um, I, I was just blown away by the amount of brush that was hauled to the tree down.
Insane.
Thought I would just buzz down there with my truckload and, man, I had to get in line. It was a steady line. It was unbelievable.
I've been down three separate evenings and I've been in line every time. Through the last, this last weekend.
I've heard also how, how efficient it is, that the lines move fairly quickly and it's easy, easy, e- easy to maneuver down there, the way it's laid out and kept pushed back, so.
It's always nice if the drivers know what's going on. We don't have to wait one at a time.
Yeah, right.
You do like.
Five or six, yeah, right.
Yeah, so I've heard some compliments on how well it's being kept up and laid out and organized, so you should feel good about that.
When I was down there about four o'clock on Tuesday, I was in and out in five minutes. And that was, the line was back up to the road, but everything kept moving.
Yeah.
Very efficient.
It was good. And I know that there was plenty hours spent on pushing that brush back in the past week and is continuing as the days go. So thanks again for that too, cause I know you oversee both.
I just wanna expand on just, not only the city's crews and police departments and fire departments out working, but just our community as a whole. Um, I've seen lots of people posting online, I've seen lots of people, you know, just drive by, they'll call somebody out because they just stopped. And literally, I, I know who they are, but you'll just see a, some guy named Chris or some guy, you know, just thanks, whoever you were. They have no idea who they were, so just, just to echo, I mean, it's, we don't always see eye to eye. We don't always agree on things as a whole. I mean, it's just natural as people, you're not going to. But again, um, that's one thing that, not only from a small town, but from the Midwest and things that, you know, in other parts of the country, I don't think you get as much of. Um, I was really, really happy to hear that and see that and, and to see how neighbors were, were helping neighbors and the whole thing, so. Um, it was great to see and, and hear and, and see the constant praise of everyone helping each other out on, uh, social media and stuff, so. Just for those that helped, I mean, just, you deserve a little bit of thanks too.
Yeah.
It took, it took an army.
Yeah, yes.
Had a neighbor mention that he was out, um, cleaning up his yard and some person that he'd never seen before was driving by with the truck and said, you, would you like me to throw yours in with mine? I've got some extra room, you know? Had never seen him before, never saw him again.
That was nice. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think so.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.